What's that? Well, yeah, we'll probably have a couple more people show up. But, yep, it's time. So it is 6 o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. We'll call the Johnston City Council Work Session Number 25-13 to order. Cindy Roelkraer, please.
Councilmember Coe, Martin.
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Burkhart?
Here.
Evans?
We have a couple of items on the agenda this evening. The first one is to give us a progress update from Group Creatives on Phase 1 and 2 in developing the city's art and culture plan. Josh?
And Mayor and Council, as the mayor said, we're going to have our first midpoint update in creating the city's creating the city's...
Can you please turn on the mic, please?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As the mayor mentioned, Tiva Dawson is here from Group Creatives to give us our first midpoint update in the process of creating the city's first public art and culture plan, something many of our peers have done on counterparts in the metro, and this is our opportunity now. Tiva, in her firm, is an expert in this industry, in this space, so we're happy to have her aboard. She has led us through a pretty active process over the last couple of months. As a refresher, the council signed a contract with her in January, and we got started in April. She'll go into more detail, but she's facilitated not only you as council members with focus sessions, but she's also met with a number of stakeholders in the community, folks at Camp Dodge in Sailerville, from the Army Corps, some of our larger employers, and also citizens also in the community. So I'll let her go in more detail. She also has a little bit of an interactive opportunity for council to give some feedback, so I'll turn it over to Tiva.
Thank you. I am going to switch over to my presentation. While I'm talking, in order to get into the interactive point, if you want to, if you can see the QR code and go ahead and activate that, that'll bring up an opportunity to do some survey while we're moving through the presentation. Again, as Josh mentioned, just a quick update. Phase 1, that we started off a little bit before April, staff sent us a lot of your existing plans, strategic plans, master plans. So we've done a deep dive into some of the existing hopes and dreams that you have as a council. We met with the steering committee in Phase 1 and did some focus groups and lots of interviews. So Phase 1 is really just, what's the lay of the land here? What's the current context? And making sure that we understand who is the city of Johnston? And what are, what do you, what does everybody hope for the future? And kind of mapping what are existing assets, unique personality traits for the community, as well as where opportunities to lean in on for the plan. So we, Phase 2 is an analysis of all that, and that's what we're here to talk about this evening, is just kind of the summary of everything that we heard. As Josh mentioned, we did interviews with most of you all, interviews with folks like Camp Dodge, kind of key stakeholders in the community, the Chamber, the folks up at Sailerville, Corteva. We just kind of looked to a wide variety for one-on-one interviews, again, the steering committee online survey. So really trying to kind of gather all we could. And then tonight's a chance to say with our summary, did we hear it all correctly? Is there anything that doesn't ring true, or we missed entirely? After we do this moment, then we'll move into writing recommendations. But we want to kind of give you a sense of the buckets of where we'll be writing recommendations. So it feels, again, this needs to feel like it's true to you all. That's why it's kind of this midpoint. So I'm just going to go through a few slides here. It matches the report that was part of your agenda packet. So all of that is there for you to refer back to. Again, we try and keep these things brief. When we say the brief, it is the brief. So there's a lot more data behind all of this, but we're wanting to just again summarize it for you all. Residents have a lot of pride here, probably not surprising to you, but are yearning for more cultural resources. They've mentioned things like, we have, we want more hospitality, want less unresolved spaces. They talk a lot about wanting to do things together. People want spaces where they can connect either with family and friends, but also maybe bump in and a chance to meet new people, you know, get a sense of, we hear a lot nationally about the loneliness pandemic. We want folks, I think, even in all of our communities, to feel connected. Quality of life amenities, you guys have solid ones. People kind of expect it now. They want more programs, I think, related culturally to that as well. 1 and 3 in the survey said there's, say there's plenty of opportunities. So I think there's room to grow for your quality of life amenities. And then stronger aesthetics, they love the trees. As you all know, there's a strong aesthetic of the trees here. So there's a lot of beauty that people appreciate about the natural spaces. And then the survey really shows that there's support for local funding to dance this as well. So your first chance to use the mentimeter is what stands out from the survey findings. You can choose to respond. If I've done that, so I should tell you, this is my first time doing this, but my colleagues tell me I'll be fine. So if you have any responses on things I've already mentioned in terms of the findings that you'd want to share, did you guys all get it to pick up off I, all right, okay? And there's just a thumbs up if you want to be like, all good? If there's anything else we didn't hit right? This one wasn't a huge list to cover, so. Are you still working on one, Mayor? She's still typing. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. We will hold on.
Sorry.
You're fine. One thing about it, the community wants more opportunities to connect. We heard that a lot, both on neighborhood level, but also kind of cohort level. Teenagers wanting places for them to be able to hang out. So kind of looking both demographically as well as geography-wise. Trees are important. You guys are moving forward on kind of a tree plan. We'd love to make sure that we feel like those things can be integrated. Shared spaces, yes.
If I'd known that Brian was going to respond when he did, I would have just stopped.
You're concurring. It's good to have concurrence in all of this, yes. The next one is really what we call placemaking themes. So this is where, what makes you stand out? What's iconic, unique, personality-wise? What's the flavor of this community? Once we kind of had water, it's a key theme, and wind, we really couldn't help ourselves but just go all in on the earth, wind, water, and fire. So there's a few different things in that. So rural charm. There's a lot of folks to talk about, small-town charm. Sometimes we call it, we had another name for it. Not small-town charm. Hometown kind of charm. So that sense of knowing people when you go to the grocery store, that, like, that feeling of being a small community within, that's metro-adjacent. With Corteva being here and your history of that, there's certainly a lot of, you're just rural-adjacent in a lot of ways that you will always be, right? And there'll always be that agricultural cycles. You've kept the Simpson barn. There could be even more that could lean in there as well. There's a lot of attachment to schools. You have one high school that really lends itself well for a lot of togetherness under one umbrella with the, with the school. And, yeah, I think there's, again, wanting people to connect. So we heard that again, growing together. Wind. Your kite festival is really just such a unique event for the whole metro that is nothing like that out there. And so we really are wondering if there's more ways of leaning in to the idea of wind and celebrating that, and maybe even growing the idea of beyond kites. You have a very horizontal landscape. Probably not a lot of places for kids to go sledding around here. A few places, maybe. But other ways to kind of lean into that, that horizontal landscape. Water really came up so many times. Not only do you have a lot of water to celebrate within your boundaries, from Beaver Creek really being kind of a key corridor for you that you are leaning into already in terms of water trails, but you have the Tierra Lake, Tierra Lake Park. You have other potentially ones coming online in the future with the dredging sites. But you're also sitting adjacent to a lot of water resources. A lot of people from the community are going to pass through here on their way to Sailerville, or maybe even Jester Park. So you're really, you have a lot to consider when it's like, on the, at the water's edge. And then fire, certainly Camp Dodge is just, again, like Corteva, they will be here for a long time. They have been here for a long time, longer than you all probably, right? And so really acknowledging that as part of an origin story for the community. But it's not just what happens there in terms of the service folks coming through and being trained, but there's a lot of natural space that they have. I know council member Martin mentioned that too, that you've done two tours out there. I think they boast, I can't remember the number. I have this to you as number in my head for one time. The eighth largest green space in the state. I think it's pretty massive. Can't go into most of it, but when you really think about habitat, quality, birding in a community, all those things are being fed there. So that's kind of our key placemaking themes. So your next question is, what do you feel like is most iconic? It could be anything I've mentioned, or anything else you feel like is, like, you have found is an iconic thing about this community, either a tradition, or the, you know, what's your, what's your Eiffel Tower? That's a great list, right? Who doesn't want to live in a community that's got all that? I love the limestone entry one, too. And I, we did talk with the consultants working on your streetscape's plan to make sure we understood what was happening. Is it an important aesthetic direction that you're happening, or going? So we want to make sure we were in tune with that. And then, yeah. Oh, sorry, are you still?
I am, but it's not picking up my words. So I'll try one more time. Maybe I'm trying to write too much. Small-town feel, strong neighborhoods.
There we go, yay. Thank you. Does someone write safely curious? Because I'm curious what that means.
Maybe, maybe they did.
What do you mean by that one?
I, you know, I, I was one who commented on our schools to some extent, and I love the curious nature of kids and learning. But I also, as I had already contributed two other words, that was my third, I couldn't avoid the safe factor of our community and how much that's valued. It's a value of all generations, and it certainly is valued though toward our schools and toward our learners, and learners of all ages, too, that, that we're not, we're not learning with reckless abandon by, you know, blowing things up and starting fires and things like that. But we want to maintain that.
There's many ways to be curious and learn, sure.
Exactly.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a quick list of existing assets that we would say are, again, that we were hearing a lot of, solid community events. You guys have great ones already established. Good school system, community is highly educated, moderately wealthy. So there probably is appetite to want to support things. You have beloved hubs. So you already have some town center, Tierra Lake Park, the library, that they came up over and over in interviews with folks, as well as just, again, Camp Dodge, Pioneer, and Urban Railroad are key origin stories for you. Beauty in the trees, parks and trails. People, again, feel connected. Here is a small-town feel. Lots of open space and habitat, adjacent in the city. And lastly, your existing public artwork, including ripples, right? Oh, suddenly I feel like I'm not going to lose it. Yes. Which combines oddly enough both water themes and wind themes. I thought it was great. Not everybody starts off with things that can be really well-loved when they have a large piece like that, and it feels like that's a, that's a big hit. We've come into many communities that are kind of repairing from not-so-good first efforts on public artwork. Any ideas on how to leverage any of those assets to enhance Johnston's culture? Maybe start to monetize here. Ripples and murals.
I think the mural is fabulous, and I keep asking for a print of it.
That's great. Okay. Thank you.
Well, I want a t-shirt with Up/Down on it.
We could have a whole t-shirt shop.
Oh, yeah. I mean, t-shirts, bumper stickers, right? There's all sorts of, like, ways to go there. Yeah, that's great.
And if you buy it, it goes into, you know, paying for more art.
Yeah. Great, yeah. And then lastly, the nine kind of areas of recommendations that we'll be leaning in on. This is what kind of, not that there isn't more assets that we'll continue to map, but this is where the kind of the main headlines are. So regional destination in art and culture. People are really longing for a, for folks to feel like there's something that is unique here, where others have to come to our community to go and experience it. And then kind of aside with all of that is also balancing kind of the future sports-centric development. So there's going to be solidly in there. How do we make sure it feels balanced? Social cohesion is, again, what we talked about. More cozy places for people to connect, maybe spontaneous connections. It's the watercooler effect, right, in the office? What are the ways that people can just, like, bump into each other? Also balanced with community-wide cohesion. We heard a lot of old Johnston, new Johnston, east, west, now northwest, right? So what are the ways in which everyone feels like they're part of the, the big identity of Johnston? Heard there's, you guys have several key corridors, but really Merle Hay, hopefully not surprising to you guys, came up the most in terms of where folks would love to see kind of just beauty, aesthetics, welcoming, us leaning in there. Part of it could be entrance features, you know, when people know you get to Johnston when you're crossing over. But also, you still have some key assets, some older areas. I think of the ice cream shop, right? There's some quaint spaces that could continue to kind of be enhanced along that corridor as well. Streetscape design, as I mentioned, we are paying attention to that plan and looking for ways in which art is integrating and aligned with that. More ways to engage with water, probably not surprising to you either, but a lot of our surveys, people said, we want a pool, we want a pool, we want a pool. So I'm sure you've heard that for years. But in the meantime, you have a lot of water. And so thinking about other ways for people to engage with the water. We will, as all plans, be looking at how to integrate into your processes. So what are policies to think about adopting? How do we look at ways in which the art committee of the council? Already forgot, council. It's the art, you're, I've forgotten the name of the Johnston Art Council.
Art Council, I can never remember it.
Some cities are commissions and not, or what's, so I was, so just making sure that we are thinking about how all the pieces fit together, and that art is really not just, like, relying on one person to happen to think of it. It becomes part of city process. Again, are there ways to embrace the gateway to the lakes? I think I mentioned to a few people, you know, I spent a lot of time in the lakes in Minnesota, and it is kitschy lake factor everywhere, you know? Every drink is named after it. Even, there's like the bait shop here and the one bar up there. But there isn't a lot of embrace that you're really at a major water's edge with really million, like, I don't know the number of people that visit it. Sailerville, is there a way for you to feel like you are that gateway to the, what are the opportunities there? And then lastly, you guys have current assets, and then ones that are queued up to be built. We want to make sure that we're capitalizing on those assets, like the water trail, the new water trail launch site that's happening on Merle Hay. There is kind of an ex-marsa spot for artwork. We'll make sure that we're considering what can be in those places as well. Any questions? But also just, what are you most excited about in these priorities? Do we miss anything? So anything else under that recommendation bucket? We did hear the lighted art is a, so Merle Hay Corridor, you guys are mirroring a lot of what we heard. The corridor, folks are really anxious for the development to kick off. And I think we want to make sure that we feel like the, your art program's kind of ready for that as well. Lighted art in the surveys that the streetscape folks did, lighted art came up high in their survey list. So I think that, again, more than one survey in planning process you've done has echoed that. Roundabouts, you guys are unique with so many roundabouts. It seems like a shame if we don't kind of capitalize on that. Specific wording examples for art investment. Is that like what kind of code, types of policy? Yes, yep, all of that. And we usually try and match that to the type of size of a community. So it's not just like, oh, you know, the folks in Portland were able to do these things. It's trying to really make sure it's, feels like it's like comparison. But yes, we have a lot of that sample language. That is the kind of update. And anything else that you want to make sure that we're considering that we haven't talked about? But those nine buckets will be the ones that we'll start to make more detailed recommendation under.
Tiva, when do you think you'll have the final report for us?
I think we're due back in September. So we've met with the steering committee twice. They've seen this report and started to help us brainstorm within that report of what they would like to see in the community under kind of those themes. So then we'll start writing, and then we'll go back with the steering committee, get them to review that and come back with you all as well. And we will consider that draft at that moment, too, just to make sure. Yep.
Great job so far.
Though I feel like it rings true. Anything else you want to make sure we're considering that's not in there?
Council? Thank you.
Good, thank you.
The other item on our agenda is an overview of the flock camera system.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we've got Captain Steve Norrie here that's going to walk through a presentation with you on an overview of our flock camera system. I know that we've been discussing this technology over the last couple budget cycles. We're about a year into our program now with more cameras coming online. And we've got some real wins to celebrate in this. As, as you know, and as we've discussed in the past, technology is evolving at such a rapid pace. And in regional areas such as a metropolitan area, crime doesn't really know boundaries by community. And in our case, in many instances, those that come to commit crimes in Johnston don't live in Johnston. So by utilizing technology as a force amplifier that's available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, it gives us greater solvability factors in crime. So Captain Norrie's going to walk through kind of a broad overview, some general information on it, and then hopefully we'll have time to answer any questions that you might have as well.
All right, Mayor and Council, thanks for having me. Thanks for making the time. In the interest of brevity, this was originally a 30-minute PowerPoint presentation. I'm not going to drone on for 30 minutes, so I'm just going to try and hit the high points.
You have the time.
Well, I want to leave time for questions.
Sorry, quickly.
So I'm just going to really touch on, just retouch on the benefits of the program, kind of go over the, the functions and the capabilities of the system. And then I want to leave with some wins because that's really the, the best illustration on what we're getting on our return on investment. So no surprise here, as we know, the metro and Johnston, growing community. And with the growing community comes increased demand for police resources. So as Chief mentioned, about two years ago, we tried, we started looking for some technology that would give us good bank for our buck to really act as a force multiplier and help make us more efficient, more effective in our jobs. For various reasons, we're very rarely at full staff. So with the increasing calls for service, increasing population, demand for our resources, we were really looking for something that could help the officers, again, just be more efficient with our time. We're also seeing kind of a change in, and this is a good illustration. We're seeing more firearms and drugs-related things than historically we've seen. This is just some, some things to note in 2024, kind of what we're up against. Last year, we took 25 firearms off the street, 563 rounds of ammunition. And I highlighted two of the drug-related items, 382 individual drug items that we saw. But we're also seeing, it's just not just marijuana and prescription pills that we're seeing. We're seeing some pretty dangerous stuff out there. We had a lot of fentanyl we took off the street last year, and xylazine, which, that's, that's a particularly nasty one. We were one of the first departments in the state to have something test positive for xylazine. I won't go into what it is, but it's, it's really prevalent on the East Coast, and we knew eventually it was going to make its way here, and it's here. So. Individual seizures. So some could. That would count as one, yep. So again, a couple of years ago, we started looking for the force multiplier, and I think we found that with the flock system. So if I, I might intermingle LPR and flock, but for the sake of this, I mean the same thing. LPR is just the license plate reader. So some of the benefits of this program, one, as Chief mentioned, it helped us generate investigative leads. Before, if I knew, let's say, a suspect was driving a silver Jeep Liberty, before what I had to do is I had to call the Department of Transportation. If I was lucky, I knew the county it was from. And if I was even more lucky, I had a couple plate digits, and I would have them run what's called an offline search. Then they would email me probably a 15-page document of every silver Jeep Liberty in Polk County, and then I would individually have to track each one of those down. With flock, all I can, all I have to do is put silver Jeep Liberty, if I know the area where it's at and a timeframe, I can punch it in, and it's going to show me every single Jeep Liberty along with the license plate information. So in a matter of seconds, I have it, whereas before, and I'm probably antiquating myself and saying that's how we used to do it, but that's how we did used to do it. And now I can have the same results in five minutes or less, and I'm not chasing my tail. Or worst-case scenario, wasting hours of my time trying to find a car, which probably isn't even the right one. One of the biggest things, and I'm going to go over a win on this here in a little bit, is it helps our officers increase our situational awareness. So there's kind of two functions of the LPR program. The first one is kind of the proactive side of it, where it gives us alerts. So there's hot list alerts. hot list alerts, uh, that lets us know, um, anything that's in, uh, NCIC is the system, it's a nationwide entry, and that's where wanted people, stolen vehicles, missing persons, Amber Alert, um, people on the terrorist watch list, uh, people with protection orders, all that stuff gets entered into the system. Anything in that system, uh, with the license plate associated to it, drives by one of our cameras, it sends us an alert. So it might not necess- necessarily be something we act on, um, but it's just to have the situational awareness that, um, hey, um, somebody with a protection order came to town, if we have, uh, sex-related crime, we're investigating, and I want to know what sex offenders were in the area at the time, I can just go in and look in the system and it'll tell me, or to tell me before, uh, as soon as they come into town, so. Um, there's also a lot of examples, we don't have one yet, but our day is coming, um, missing people specifically like, uh, maybe endangered persons or Alzheimer's patients who wandered away from home, they went out for a drive to go to the grocery store, next thing you know, they're three states away, if they get entered into the system, when they drive by that, we can go intercept them. So, I gave a similar presentation probably a year and a half ago, and at that time, um, there was about half of the cameras that there are currently, so this is a robust system and it's growing, uh, exponentially, um, these numbers are probably already outdated because, uh, July 1 rolled around and everybody got new money, so, um, currently, just in the metro, there, we have access to about 225, uh, license plate readers cameras, just through the flock system. Nationwide, we can search data from over 9,000 cameras and that number grows every day. Basically, every metro, every agency, uh, in the metro has the system and are adding cameras to it. So again, and, uh, just to recap, um, the, uh, the kind of two functions, uh, the first one I mentioned was like the proactive, uh, the hot list alerts, so, again, this is just a list of everything I already mentioned, but then we also have what's called a custom hot list, so, that's a list that our agency controls and we can put vehicles of interest into that list that maybe don't arise to where they need to be or can be entered into NCIC. So, we've used this system, uh, fairly extensively, and we've got a good success story at the end here, where we were doing, uh, doing a narcotics investigation, and we knew a bunch of vehicles associated with this, and so we put those vehicles into the hot list, and that allowed us to keep tabs on their movements and their comings and goings, uh, without the traditional method of having to get in a covert undercover police car and tail them around, we could literally just follow them from camera to camera and see where they were going. Um, and in fact, we had two vehicles that we could see, we were getting alerts on them, and we could see that they were gradually moving closer to each other, and, um, and it, it turned out to be true, is that we, we knew there was probably a meetup that was going to happen for a drug sale, um, and previous intelligence told us, hey, this is where they're likely going, so we drove straight to that spot and saw them. So, that's just a, a really good example of how it's saving time and it, and it's really, really efficient, so.
Do you need a warrant to put that, to create the custom hot list for these localized?
No, um, because it's just tracking them out in the public, um, so it's, it's really just a different way of doing surveillance. Um, the second part of the, uh, the, the functionality is the search function, and with the new cameras that we have coming online right now, um, really the intent of those cameras is to help us on the backside, when the crimes already happened, now we need to search and, and find corroborating evidence or figure out, uh, vehicles so we can track down the players. So, it's a really robust search function, um, you can search full, partial license plates, images, uh, with or without license plates, uh, it'll search any vehicle from Mexico, Canada, or the United States, you can search, again, by, uh, body type, color, any identifiers, um, and we have a free trial of a search function called Freeform right now, which is artificial intelligence, uh, I'm particularly excited about this one, um, so it, it basically is an open text field, and let's say that you were out mowing your lawn, you went inside to grab a drink and you come back outside and your lawnmower's gone, um, neighbor says, hey, I, it was a white truck, um, I can type in white truck with lawnmower in the bed, and it will show me pictures of every white truck that has a lawnmower in the back of that truck. Um, another example that they used was the Monster Energy logo, um, you can search for any vehicle regardless of type, um, you can just type in car, truck, vehicle with Monster Energy logo, you put in the reason for your search, and your time and date parameters, and it will show you every vehicle with the Monster Energy logo. So again, that, that can be a big time saver, um, where rather than me having to filter through every single white truck, and then trying to look at all the pictures for one that has Mike's lawnmower in the back, now I can just go straight to the vehicle with the lawnmower in the back. So again, uh, phase one, that's where we kind of created the virtual gateway, the majority of those cameras were focused on, uh, alerting us to vehicles coming into Johnston, we put two outgoing cameras in our two highest traffic areas, which was, uh, 86th Street and Merle Hay Road. The cameras that we're starting to fill in now are, um, we have really good coverage, I think there's one street that you can drive into Johnston on and not, uh, go past a license plate reader, uh, so now the intent is to start filling in some of the outgoing stuff to really help our officers with the reactive search function. I'm going to skip past some of these stats, I can make this available to you if you're a stat person and want to look at some of this stuff, but this was, just really illustrates some of the alerts that we've received and how much our officers are actually using this system. All right, so now to the success stories, so, um, we, a couple of months ago, uh, we found out that there was, and we found this from another agency, some suspects from the Johnston area, they were committing vehicle burglaries, um, down in Florida, and Florida captured them on surveillance camera, and while they were committing the burglaries, they were walking around with guns, so we knew where they were armed. Um, using the information from those live cameras, they plugged that information into their flock cameras, and we're able to identify a specific vehicle that was registered, uh, right on the border of Johnston and Grimes. Uh, using the search function, uh, we created a heat map, which is, uh, part of the analysis part of the, uh, the flock program, and we discovered that not only were they in Florida, they were in Georgia too, we made a phone call down there, and lo and behold, they had a bunch of vehicle burglaries with a similar vehicle caught on their flock cameras. So, we were able to use the information from Florida and Georgia to author the search warrant up here, we executed the search warrant, um, ended up recovering a gun off that suspect, and he was arrested on multiple charges, uh, for crimes that committed, were committed in Florida and Georgia. Uh, also, he was a felon, so he shouldn't have had a gun anyways, um, and he ultimately confessed, I mean, when faced with that mountain of evidence in your vehicle on, in the location where two things happened, that's not coincidence, so, uh, he ended up confessing. We had, we also had, uh, an assist for the Perry Police Department in locating an arson and attempted murder suspect, so, they initially just contacted us because the suspect was believed to be driving a rental car that was rented out of Johnston. Um, our detective, uh, she's a real go-getter, she took the initiative and said, hey, we got flock, I'm going to look up this vehicle in flock, uh, Perry Police Department at the time didn't have access to flock. So, uh, she was able to locate the vehicle traveling west on the interstate in Nebraska, um, with a couple of phone calls, uh, they called, uh, she called Perry, Perry facilitated calling Nebraska State Patrol, and they ended up finding the suspect, um, just over the state line into Colorado, um, and without flock, that would have never been possible, we would have had no idea where the suspect was, and our detective never left her living room couch, she was at home watching her child, who was watching an uninteresting child show, and she was bored, so, never left her couch and helped find an attempted murder suspect. Um, and this one's very recent, um, this, this is how flock is helping to, us to intercept crime, um, it was about a two-week period, and this was at the end of May into early June just this year, um, we recovered three stolen vehicles, which recovered, which, uh, resulted in the recovery of all three, arrested five total persons, um, and recovered stolen property, including stolen firearms. Based on some of the items we found in the car and just the known MOs, um, these were all, um, juveniles or young adults, uh, they weren't coming to Johnston, uh, to hang out with friends, uh, we believe that they were coming here to commit crimes, probably vehicle burglaries, but within, all three of them were intercepted within minutes of them being spotted on the flock camera, so they never had an opportunity, uh, to commit additional crimes other than the ones they've already committed, so, um, and those were, all three of those were a result of a hit on the flock system. And these are just a few of many success stories I could share with you. So, um, was that, is there any questions?
I, I do have a couple, um, and, and the, the, the first of which is more of a technical question, the second one is more anecdotal, uh, if you want to relate to it, but from a technical perspective, you passed by a stat that indicated a number of searches that had been conducted by month or, or at least over a timeframe, does the department have a way to be able to audit those searches or at least monitor who is conducting those searches and what those searches are, and, and you have an internal policy in place to be able to make sure?
That's built right into our policy, we do a monthly audit and then a year-end audit as well, um, because obviously, um, we want the information to be used correctly, 99.99% of the images taken by the system will never even be viewed, um, but at the same time, um, you know, we want to be transparent, we also want to be responsible with the information that we have, so, yes, there is audits done monthly, um, and annually to ensure that there's proper use of the system.
Great.
And the system tracks all of that for us.
Very good. The, the other question, as I kind of alluded, is more anecdotal, and, and I, uh, am, am certainly appreciative of the wins that, that you were able to highlight, that last one especially, you, you kind of introduced this entire subject, and even when we were deciding on, I think it was at that point, we still had decision packages or something along those lines, you know, as far as that goes, as a force multiplier, we hear that over and over again, to help and, and, you know, actually, um, you know, make jobs, uh, more efficient, I will never say easier, uh, from that, and if I do, uh, you have every reason to tap me on the shoulder or harder.
Burn easier, they ended up with a lot of people.
But the, the reality is, especially even in that last one, it's causing you more work than what you had before necessary, I mean, or, or, and you may, or maybe not, I, I don't know, I mean, you may have intervened before it would have caused you more work, uh, and, and so, I mean, do, do you sense though that you're actually, you know, trying to pursue or contact or have inner, you know, agency communications more, and, and in other words, is this actually becoming a, a bigger, uh, task than what you had anticipated as a department?
It's, um, we're not compelled to act on the alerts, um, something like that with a stolen vehicle, um, unless we're all tied up on a much higher priority call, we'll always act on that because we know that people steal cars and there's a high likelihood that they're going to co-commit additional crimes, so, it may give the perception that it's creating additional work, um, but we're intercepting, in this case, suspected, uh, car burglars, we're, we're saving work down the road by, by intercepting it earlier, and we're saving people from being victims and having to call and report it to us. So, it's, I mean, it's really a case-by-case basis, but, um, yes, it does create us some additional work, but I think it, it creates a safer community too, so.
Great.
Let me just add my perspective on that, um, everything that I do as your police chief is a calculation of return on investment, everything equates to a dollar value and a time assessment, so, when you see statistically a number of arrests increase or a number of firearm seizures go up, from, from a numbers balance point, yes, that's an increase, but the efficiencies that this creates for our officers with the limited resources we have, typically we only have three officers on patrol, sometimes it's more than that, sometimes, it's not usually less than that, but, um, in, in the scope of the duties that we perform, there's also a hierarchy of that return, right? Solving a theft case is one thing, intervening in a potential shooting that may occur of, of rival gang members or something along that side, something very different, so, uh, we, we are able to, to, I think, really show the return on investment with, probably in the grand scheme of an investigation, similar timeframes of what it takes to get to that lead in a traditional sense versus technology bolstering that lead up front, that I, I think the, the hard part is the balance of what did we prevent, we're never really going to have a strong calculation there, but, uh, we're, when, when you look at the investment of this program at this point, we've got roughly $50,000 annually into this investment, and Captain Norrie's done a great job of securing grants for us to get seed money in the first year of, of our first two years, um, but with that, to hire one detective or to hire one cop to be on that, if I want one cop to be on that street corner 24 hours a day where that camera is, I got to actually hire six cops to do that, and so you're, you're looking at the investment of about 50% of what it would cost me to hire one property crimes detective, with the use of, what we now have will be 16 cameras that have created a, a virtual fence around us to be able to help investigate crime much more efficiently with the resources that we have, so the, the sustainability long-term is much greater with the bolstering of technology than it is to add six or even eight police officers just to focus on criminal investigations the old way or the traditional way.
Um, I have a question about the case that happened with the Perry, um, suspect, so Perry didn't have flock.
Yeah.
But somehow, this detective at home heard that they were looking for this car that was rented in Johnston, and, and, and this call went out to local jurisdictions saying we're looking for this car?
They called us specifically because the car had been rented in Johnston, so it was a networking thing where they reached out, and it was just, hey, be on the lookout, just in case.
It just seems to me like, um, even if they didn't have, I mean, I understand that we have flock or whatever here in town, we have all our cameras, which we paid for, um, but Perry, if there were a national source for connecting all these cameras together, Perry could have put their request to that, do you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, um, interestingly enough, uh, Perry just came online, uh, with LPRs, so they have joined the network, um, I just approved their request to share camera information back and forth last week, as a matter of fact.
Councilmember Martin's question leads me to one though, too, that it, and it's more of a policy decision, the effectiveness of this system is not just the 16 cameras in our, in our jurisdiction and that we pay for, it, it really is the 90-plus in the metro area, it's the 9,000 nationwide, because we do know that there are no bounds when it comes to criminals and their movements and, and where they, you know, feel compelled to commit that crime. From a, from a policymaker's standpoint, are there things that we should be doing to try to advocate even greater effectiveness of these systems to our neighboring communities within the metro? And, and I'll, dare I say it, even ask our state lawmakers, because I truly believe we could become an even safer state if we had some sort of more aggregate type of, uh, situation, are, are you willing to go on record to say, yeah, we'd like this, and if you can help nudge that, you know, that's, that's what I'm looking for?
Answer your question, yes, absolutely, the, I mean, the, the reality is, is, think, think of this as one system in the intelligence networks that we have through, through law enforcement, from national state down to local level, and, and so with that, in the same way that, that we might have a, a victim in Johnston, that oftentimes there's predatory aspects of, of persons' criminal acts, and so that happens in other jurisdictions, in the same way that we pick up a telephone and call someone in California to help us with an investigation, this is just another tool, we have intelligence databases that we use all the time, NCIC as far as an official record, but we have a robust statewide intelligence sharing network, there are states in the United States who have these systems on their interstate highways and those kinds of things, the state of Iowa currently does not, um, hopefully at some point, that will be an option in the future, and that would just add additional efforts, uh, that are, additional results to our efforts, but, right now, um, it, it's, it's fairly frequent across the Des Moines metropolitan area to engage law enforcement, whether it be seeing something on, on a vehicle that we're looking for that maybe was in Chicago yesterday, Iowa City earlier today, Des Moines now, Council Bluffs later, uh, those, you, you can watch them follow kind of through the different communities as they traverse the state, so obviously having a statewide interstate system would certainly be beneficial to that, there's, there's cost with that, obviously, each, each entity bears the burden of those costs themselves, but I would absolutely support the expansion of the network, and I, I think the, the cops are always very resilient and resourceful, and so we, we have great effort, uh, already and great relationships, when we, we share our, our, uh, data with When we, we share our, our data with other agencies, they share with us. You have to make that request, you have to offer that. There's a process of checks and balances to that. It's, it's done under very stringent conditions. It is intelligence data that we are collecting, so it's protected. It's not discoverable through a FOIA request or something along those lines. So there's, there's, there's some interstate aspects to that as far as the regulatory piece. But certainly the, I mean, the use of technology, as we've touched on a little bit, we're just kind of at that foundational level. The trying to wrap our minds around the artificial intelligence side of things. But let's face it, criminals are using artificial intelligence. The police need to be using artificial intelligence to catch those criminals, right? So unfortunately, law enforcement as a whole, we're typically reactive to, to what goes on in society. But we're, we're advancing as quickly and safely and securely as we can. My, my approach to technology in general as a tool for law enforcement is never to be on the cutting edge. I don't want to be the beta test for anything and have to answer to the problems that happen with that. So we monitor very closely and we're a half a step behind making sure what we have is, is what's proper and what's needed for our community that I can justify. We've taken a, a very open approach to this. There are some communities that don't want to talk about Flock, don't want anything known about that. And, and the data that's collected in Flock absolutely is confidential information. It's restricted. But there's, there's, there's a lot of effort on our part to make sure that we have the available transparency. We do an annual report on this at a FOIA request a few weeks ago. I turned that annual report over to them. There's a lot of agencies that don't do that. But our approach is that this is nothing to be ashamed of. This is nothing big brother-ish in the sense of, of some of the criticisms that first came out with this technology. This is a real tool that makes a real difference in our community. We use it appropriately. We use it wisely and under the law and under policy. And I'm not ashamed of that, I'm proud of it. I think we, we have tremendous investigators and officers that worked interdict crime every single day. And it's my job to give them the tools. And if you want to give me more tools at the state level or the local level, I will gladly accept it.
Thank you.
My question, and, and, and I think this is an amazing tool. I'm so glad that, that we have it and that we were ahead of a lot of the other agencies in, in putting it in place. We currently have 16?
15.
15. Do we need more?
Chief, you want to handle that?
Yes.
My answer is yes, Beth. I want to make sure that was the answer.
Yeah, the, so again, like the, everything costs money, right? So we're, we're, we're always doing this assessment. We started with 11 and then we brought five months. So I think we're at 16, I don't know if they're all stood up yet. But in, in the scope of this, the, the functionality piece, the, the Captain Norrie mentioned as far as the AI search tool that we're currently testing right now. There's a cost associated with that if we want to subscribe to it. I, I think it's going to be an invaluable tool. So there, we, we've done phase one and phase two. You're absolutely going to see a phase three in the next budget cycle. Now, is that a mixture of, hey, we want to subscribe to this AI tool? And that's the annual cost similar to what it would be to stand up another camera? So we, we, we have to evaluate the, kind of the holes in the fence at this point as far as, as the ingress and the egress of our community and, and really do that, that, that calculus on where's the greatest dollar spent in the investment? But we're, when you look at, at us versus other communities, West Des Moines, there, I think there's 60 plus cameras that they have. Altoona has an entirely different robust system of multiple layers building towards a real-time crime center. They, they're on the cutting edge of technology with what they're embracing. But there's a cost associated with that. Right now, when I came to you with this program, what I, what I tried to pitch to you was that I want to take the cost of one full-time position and invest that into this program and then we'll see where we're at. So I would say, well, I'll be coming back for, for some more of the, the other half of that full-time position over the next year or two as, as the budget priorities cycle out. But the other piece of it that, that's really exciting for us too, is we're going to start engaging. There's, there, there's opportunity for the school district, for example, to, to have another division of Flock come in to, to be able to, to build a camera system for their network that they can then share with us in the same way that other communities do. Private businesses, Corteva, they can do that as well. And so as you start to, to see the value in, in protecting your homestead, in our case, it's the entire city. But, you know, in, in the case of the school district, they're most concerned with their buildings and, and the stuff around them. So hopefully we can get partners to come onboard where they're going to absorb some of those costs as well that feed into our network. And again, we just, we, we built a stronger internal network. Our, our goal initially has been to kind of build that fence around the city to give us as much warning as possible. But I've, I've spoken with Matt Greiner about, you know, future intersection projects that we do, large scale remodels, that there's, the technology is always improving. So what can we do to look at, hey, when we, when we rebuild an entire intersection, we're obviously putting cameras there for, for the traffic monitoring side. But is there an opportunity to, to roll this technology into those existing cameras or to mount an additional one? Can we program that into some of our, our reconstruction efforts as we continue to build out the city? And I think that's, that's another great area for us to look at expanding. And if you're looking at a $3,000 investment in the course of a half million dollar project, it's probably pretty darn good money spent.
Thank you. Any other questions, counsel?
Question, anything?
Well, you used up most of the time you had available, so good for you. No, this was, this was important information and glad that you were here to share it with us. You know, one of the things that it reminded me of, you know, many, many years ago, when I was much younger, working up at the Capitol as a staff person up there. I remember a senator standing up on the floor of the legislature, sharing with his colleagues that, you know, there's, we've got this new DNA testing capability. And it was going to change the way law enforcement investigated, investigated crimes. And at that time, it just sounded so futuristic, you know, now it's.
Well, that's the, the use of technology, that's, I've compared this to the introduction of body worn cameras in our field. That I, I think it's that big of a deal. And, and it's, it's something that, again, we're just really at a foundational level. So we're excited about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have about four minutes before council meeting, so I think we'll just go ahead and adjourn. And take up our council meeting at seven o'clock.